Alex is cooking in. Let me mute.
What's that, Peter?
I'm gonna mute because I'm on the phone.
I'm gonna get off the phone. Okay. All right. Hey, Mayan.
Hi, how's it going?
Can you hear me?
Uh huh.
So I'm gonna pull up the agenda.
I'm here too.
Here on the screen. That's the plan.
Okay.
If I can find it on here. No, that's the wrong agenda.
Too many agendas.
Yeah. Okay, I got it. I have to get some water too because my throat's dry, so I'll be back.
Yep, I'm just sitting.
Hello?
Hey.
How are you?
Good. I'm pulling up the agenda.
I can't see it this week. I don't know what the problem is, so I'm just calling on the phone.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, I know, it's just weird.
Yeah. Were you able to get your Rotary meetings to work okay?
No, we did not for the last two weeks. So then Thursday night of this week, not this week, a different day this week, Jeff had a Rotary one that said it gave you the user, the phone number to call in, it gave you a user number and then a password. So I did that here, but I didn't have a password, and he was able to listen and hear. But no, and everyone says, well, just download it. But I know we didn't do that for this last time, and I didn't do it for the first Rotary, so what's changed? I'm not sure.
Weird.
Yeah. Well, no, you can choose no password.
Yeah, well, if the...
And I went on, yep, and that's how I got on the phone.
Well, that's something.
Yeah, I know, it's annoying, I'll tell you. Because it's a really new computer and...
So I got it up there, Alex? I got the agenda up on the screen all by myself.
Good job.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Peter.
Hi. Who else is here?
Hi, Peter.
Hi, everybody. Valerie Burch goes here.
Hi, Valerie.
Hey, Val.
No picture for Valerie?
No.
Hey, everybody.
There's Sandy. Hi.
Sandy, how are you?
Hi, Sandy.
Hey, Alex. Who's on the phone?
Diane's on the phone.
And Valerie.
And Valerie, yeah.
Hey, Alex, you can go into that little three thing and write their name, put their names in there if you want. You could rename them. Whoever's hosting, I don't know who's hosting.
Yeah.
I am. How do I do that? I go in and manage participants?
Nope, nope, nope. Go up to that little blue dots on their screen.
Oh, I can do it too. Even though I'm not hosting.
I can't get it. It says hide non-video participants. But anyway, Angela, so in their little block, you know where it says iPhone?
No.
I got it.
Oh, you found it?
You did it. There you go.
I don't see it either.
I've been a Zoom nutcase lately. I'll be right back. You were gonna start in like five minutes, right?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna mute myself. I'll be right...
I'll be right back too.
Okay. I should probably get a glass of water so I'm not coughing or anything during this, because we don't want people thinking we got LaRona.
That's right.
I don't think you cough. I think you have a fever, dear.
Hope not.
And fever people don't just cough.
Hello, is everybody?
Hi.
Hi, it's Marty.
Hi, Marty.
Hi, Marty. Hi, Deb.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm hanging in, but staying warm.
Yeah.
Good day today.
It was a great day today.
Were you working outside?
No, we walked to the state park and we went around one of the circles where people camp. Then we went up the terrible, long, muddy green trail and then all the way home. We figured we were about a mile and a half. So we had a nap this afternoon.
That makes sense.
Yeah, very nice.
Well, up where I live, it snowed today. And it was cold.
Snowed at my house too.
Yeah, me too. I think it's snowing every day.
Hopefully, there's a snow in the summer.
I hope not.
So who we missing?
Kristin. Connie, Mike. I think.
Who do we have? I think we do. We have Sandy, Marty, Diane. Me.
Val.
Valerie.
Val and Deb. So we have a forum. Why don't we just wait a few minutes?
Hey, Deb.
Hi.
We just need the person to take notes.
I'm here.
Oh, Kristen's here.
Oh, good, okay.
Seven participants.
Oh, then we have a forum.
Well, I don't know, because Alex and I are here. Yeah, you got five.
Yeah.
Cool.
Let's see, who do we have? We have Peter, Valerie, Sandy. Deb.
Deb.
And Kristin.
And Marty.
And Marty. Okay, we're doing okay. Why don't we wait just a couple more minutes? It's... One minute, 6:30.
Well, before we start, what should I be doing with my... Yeah, my petition with my signatures. I have, I still actually need to get to, but I can get them. But can I, when I get them, can I just put them in an envelope and put them in like the book drop or...
Yes.
Because I know I'm past the date, but I think...
No, that's fine. The date's changed.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
That's fine.
Looks like somebody else is just doing the meeting.
No, I got kicked off and I dialed back in.
Oh, I say hi, Marty, and said you were there.
Oh, gee, Connie. Oops, what happened? Something happened with me. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I hear you there.
I lost something here. What do I have to hit? I got a blank screen.
Oh. Um, I'm not sure. Is it just totally black?
No, it's blank. It says Zoom on it. Here, I'm both Zoom and must've hit something.
We can see your picture.
I can't see. You can see my picture?
Yeah.
If you can't see the agenda anymore, you might have to...
I can't see the agenda. What did I do?
You might have to exit and re-enter the meeting.
Is there a refresh button?
One thing I've...
I'm gonna have to log off and go back on. I don't know what happened.
Okay.
Does somebody have a television on or...
Yeah, I was just gonna say that in some other meetings I've been doing, we've been instituting, everyone mutes themselves unless they wanna talk, so that if there's any noise, it doesn't come through. And I know my boyfriend's making egg salad in the background, so I don't know if you can hear that, for instance. But if everybody mutes themselves, then I just unmute when the meeting starts.
Okay, here I am.
That would be...
I'll come back.
So that's what I'm gonna do.
How do you find it on the iPhone?
Um, I am not sure. If you tap on the screen, maybe it'll bring up options.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I just tapped on my screen and a menu came down at the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
I don't like that. I can see the... Okay, I got it now. I got the agenda. Why don't we get going? Want to get going?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Before we get going, and there's no public comment, I would presume. What I would like to do before we get going is I would like to thank everybody who's been working during this, this challenging time. Angela, Alex, Sarah, Melissa, and all the other people in the staff, who are just doing so much great stuff, so much, say, communication and offering the patrons so much stuff online. We just wanna let everybody know that we're appreciative of all the work you've done. It's been a challenge. The Zoom thing, I know Alex has been working on some Zoom stuff and other stuff. Sarah's been working on stuff. I read their reports. I just wanna let us know. I think we need to really thank them and Angela for keeping us all, keeping this place going. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be going and the services we're providing wouldn't be there. So I just wanna, at the beginning, thank everybody.
Thank you, Peter.
Having said that. Is there any additional items to the agenda?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm moving to adopt the agenda.
I'll second that. Valerie.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wait, who made that motion?
It was Marty.
Marty, all right. I thought so, but I couldn't tell. All right, Marty and Val seconded.
Right.
All right.
Okay, so we all approved. So adoption of the agenda is all approved? Let's go down the line. Deborah?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, who next? I'm looking at the list here.
Marty's a yes.
Marty's a yes. And Peter's a yes. Okay. Adoption of the minutes for March 2020. Is there a motion to do that?
I move we approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Who is who? Tell me who you are.
Diane said move it.
Who said second?
And Marty seconded.
Okay, thank you. Any, any discussion? All in favor? Peter says yes. Connie?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And Sandy?
I abstain. I wasn't there.
Okay, so you abstain. Okay. Let's see. Financial review. Is there a motion to pay the bills for March 2020?
I'll move we pay the bills.
Who's that?
Marty.
Who's second?
Connie.
All in favor? Sandy?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Diane?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yep.
Connie?
Yes.
And Peter, yes. Okay, it's been approved. Angela, your report.
Alrighty. Wow. Okay. Um... I've been sending like long updates to the staff every week. Now it's been every week. In the beginning, it was every day, but now it's every week. And I've been forwarding them to Peter just so he knows what we're up to, but I didn't wanna fill all your heads with that. But we've been busy, definitely busy. I've been following along with coronavirus updates from the state and the Department of Health. And from STLS, we had a meeting about reopening, I think that was last week. Yeah, last week. And then this week, Brian has been working on a document for us that would instruct us what to do, when to reopen. He says they're having a statewide meeting next week about that. He thought he'd get this document done this week, and I'm like, how? So he, I'm expecting great things. I've seen some model documents from other states, and I would imagine it's gonna look like that. And it'll look like a lot of places where, you know, we do certain activities for a while, and then when the state says, okay, then do more activity, you know, you're hearing it all over. You know, you, there's, you know, curbside pickup and all that stuff. We'll find out what order we do it in and all that. And the procedures that will be necessary. And I'm just thinking ahead. STLS is working on fall purchasing for gloves and masks. That would be nice. And I don't know if they'll be able to do it, but... Uh... Linda over at Dundee Library said that law, is it John Long owns lungs?
Jim Long.
Jim, sorry. Jim told her he could get those for her. So we might be getting them from Long's if STLS doesn't have state procurement of it. I asked Randy to think about a guard of some sort at the front desk area. I know you see different things at the post office and some of the stores, so he's thinking about that ahead of time. Other activities, he gave me a little report of everything he's doing. He's doing a lot of stuff around here, which is pretty cool. The place is looking really sharp already. He's painting like a madman all around inside, and when it finally warms up, he's gonna move outside and paint out there. So that'll be pretty cool. See what else he did. Um... Let's see. I don't know if you got a chance to read Alex and Sarah's reports. They, you can see they've been very busy. Yesterday, I worked here and Sarah comes in and does her story hours from here. And they're pretty quick and fast and dirty, because I don't know how you get a two-year-old to pay much attention to the computer. It was pretty cute. And Melissa is working, Melissa and Mary, but Melissa's taking on this project. She's working with Pro Action, has a home visitor program for families with vulnerable preschoolers, and I can't remember what it's called. Call it UK.
Like a head start.
I don't know. So she's working with them, and STLS put forward that they want to fund these projects where libraries prepare packets that the Pro Action program delivers. They've been doing delivery, and they also do, some of them do delivery through food programs. So the amount of people touching the stuff would only be Melissa and then the next person, and then that would be it. And they deem that as safe. So STLS told us we could have $1,000. So these are gonna be the Taj Mahal of packages for these kits. I told, I told Melissa, go bananas. So we'll see. I told her to take pictures, so I'll send them to you when they're finished. But it's a wonderful way to remind people that we're still here, supporting them. Oh, yeah, he's been outside trimming things and Randy.
Did you get an update?
Yeah, trimming. He's doing the baseboard all over the place in here and the railings, just everything, painting it. Chronicle article. Yesterday in the Chronicle, Alex has a column in the opinion part about virtual programming and...
I read it.
It was wonderful.
Yeah. The front page, sorry. The front page, uh, article about nonprofits were the last part of that on page eight, the library, and that's, I just listed everything that we're doing there. And all our contact information. We got a report from STLS that had just last week's online downloadable use, you know, eBooks and audiobooks and all that, and it was way up for us and many other libraries. It was expanded. And STLS and other libraries, STLS and Shimong put forth $16,000, and then all the small libraries are putting forth different amounts of money. And I told them to go ahead and bill us for 500 to add to the eBook and all that. So we got, we got those bills already. And so they bought those books. And so the, the collection is expanding thankfully, which is really exciting for this time. Initial reports, how... Okay. Brian reported that right away the budget, I didn't, I didn't remember. Does anybody know, was the state budget passed?
Yes.
Okay. So they did cut the libraries, which really stinks, but what do we expect?
And Angela, you know that the governor also has the authority to do even more cuts within the cuts he's already done.
Right. Well, anyways...
That that budget is a move, working piece, so... I mean, we're fully funded for a lot of stuff at the office, but nobody's really expecting to see that money.
Oh, well...
Yeah, I can't imagine with this going on that that's, that's gonna happen to everyone.
Ryan was positive about the next construction grants, but that's next year. So, you know, it's been approved and everything, but who knows?
Right.
So, but on their level, they have been cut already. STLS has, and it is in the, okay, so we usually get this little pass-through check once a year for about $4,000. That might go away, which would really stink too, but there we are. Um... In my report, I, you know, I listed different things people are doing just to keep us going. And staff are trickling in and out of the building and working on different projects, staying away from each other. It's helping us to stay a little sane, so... I think a lot, and also you can also see from my report that I've attended a lot of meetings and if I'm don't know what to do with myself at home, I'm listening to a lot of webinars, and I'm previewing a lot of webinars to send to the staff. So the staff is getting training during this time. And I think if you have any questions.
Angela, somewhere on the agenda, are we going to be talking about the budget and what that, I mean, we had this great plan for increasing salaries, and I'm just really not sure that that's...
It's on there. It's on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Connie?
Oh, man, this is not the right version of it. Sorry.
That's all right. As long as we can, as long as you remember to talk about it, that's fine.
Yeah, well, on the new business, it says budget vote. We could talk about it there.
I'm sorry. Somehow I brought up an old version here.
That's okay. No big deal.
Any other questions about Angela's report?
Thank you.
Thanks, Angela.
Okeydoke.
Okay, standing committee reports. Any finance committee discussion?
No, but I do think we need to look at that whole budget thing.
Yeah, I agree. You wanna do that now or on the new business?
Well, wait, I'm a little confused about what we're looking at for the budget thing, because didn't we already approve the proposed budget?
Okay, did you guys all the budget news in the new business, if that's all right? Or do you wanna?
Well, I think, this is my concern. You know, yeah, we approved the budgets, but we also know that the chances, I mean, that budget may get approved, but all that money may not come in. We scheduled a lot of...
I wanna, I wanna go over all that. I can, I can, but can we do it in new business?
Whenever you want. I don't care.
Yeah.
Let's do that new business. Okay.
Yeah, there wasn't any committee work. I mean, I asked the policy committee to look over the quarantine thing.
That's fine.
Any, so there's no policy committee review?
Nope. Yeah, they reviewed the quarantine closing. I'll see below.
And that's at the bottom here. Okay. And then building committee? We haven't done anything. Non-renting committee hasn't done anything. Personnel committee? Okay.
You guys have the newest version of the agenda. I'm sorry, I just don't have it on this machine.
Right.
Okay, we're down to all business, and that's HVAC update, Angela.
Okay, so when this started, I told Dom to work on the contract that we will sign with, what is the name of the company? Can't remember. Sure, Tom. Sure, Tom, I think it is. And he was, he got, oh, and Peter looked into all the references, right?
I looked into about six, five references. I called them in person, and everybody was just terrific.
Yeah.
Very positive. They had some, a lot of questions, and they seemed to say that this company follows through, does a good job.
Good. So Dom has filled in the boilerplate AIA contract agreement, and I just have to sign it and send it back to him, and then they can start when the pause ends. Because it's, they didn't already start. If they already started, that would've been cool, but they didn't, so...
So when, when our, when our pause ends, they're gonna start, and we're gonna be closed for a while.
Well, no, I don't know when they'll start. We'll see, because their schedule's probably all messed up right now, so who knows when they'll show up?
So we're, we're gonna, we're in a good situation to move forward.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll get this done by time we need it.
Yeah. The good part is we have the money, so... That's the good part.
Any other questions about the HVAC? Okay, ADA compliance committee update.
I, the plan was, when we first closed, that we would work on moving furniture, and so Randy has moved some furniture. And our page, Dave Race is working on my weed list, and then we're gonna shift all the adult fiction in such a way that there won't be any more books on the bottom shelf. So... So I don't know how, when that'll happen, but that's what's happening right now. And that's it.
Okay, and then the next one, all business, scheduled salary projection planning committee meeting in for June.
Yeah, let's not that's we got to talk about other stuff first. Because that depends on other things, so.
Okay, you want to go down to business?
Yeah.
Okay, let's talk about budget vote.
Amy, I I think she couldn't get a hold of Katie at the school, or maybe she did get a hold. I can't remember. But she refigured out the budget vote calendar. And if the board, the board, this is what I suggest. The board can vote to have the budget, the new vote date would be June 30. And then if you decide not to have a budget vote, then you can decide it in May. This way, the calendar started and you're moving forward in hopes that positive, you know, outcome for how that you want to have a new budget. If we want to go with the same, you know, if the board decides to just go with the same amount of money as they we have this year, that's fine too. But I think it would be good to just plan at this point because we have another month, well, not quite a month of this, to see how things are going.
No, what you're saying is right now it's scheduled for a budget on the 30th of June.
No, we aren't. You guys would have to do that tonight and then you can change your mind in May, most certainly.
Okay, and if.
But if you don't do that tonight, then we won't have a vote.
We probably need to vote on having a budget in June. And next month, if we need to change that for some reason or change it, we can do it.
Yeah, you can nix it next month. I just think it gives us time to see how it's.
Not able to vote on a budget this year because of all the stuff that's going on. We would use budget number from last year. And what I understand is the budget number from last year will service us. Okay, you know, as far as because we're only about we're about two point, two point something percent, 2.6 or 2.8 percent this year. And we still have, we have enough money to kind of cover what we need to cover if we don't get a new.
I'm just saying this because it's in the news right now that various libraries and things aren't going to have their vote, so. Well, either the small one.
I thought he had pushed, I thought the governor had pushed off all the school and library votes.
To June.
Yes.
To June.
Right.
But I hadn't heard he had said anything about we weren't going to vote at all.
No, 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 that's up to you guys.
Right.
And then has he done anything about letting all the voting be done by absentee ballot or no?
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, for the June 23 primary. It's all it's it it's all going to be absentee at this point.
Oh, my gosh, then this could be really, you know, that could work.
Right, I mean, I think he somebody would have to give us permission to do that. And I don't know whether that permission was granted for more than the primary.
I think we'll find we'll find out. That's the thing. Tonight, if you just say, let's have the new vote date on the 30th, then I'll have time to find out from STLS because they're the ones who pass down that information.
Okay.
Yeah, when what's the new plan for votes in general?
Right, because there needs to be an, I mean, the state's going to have to come up with a new plan for votes for the, I mean, for the schools. And we just sort of tag on to the school.
Yeah, so it's going to be soon too, I would imagine.
Yeah, so so when this decision gets made, do we need to get together before the next board meeting?
No, you you just, if you say you want to do it tonight, Amy will start a new calendar. She already developed it and she'll start doing the legal ads and stuff like we're doing it then. And if that fell apart, well, then it fell apart. Hopefully it won't.
I can I move that we hold our budget voting on June 30, 2020.
This is Marty and I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Is there all of all those in favor? Let's go down the list. Sandy?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Honey?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Peter, yes. So we're all in favor of having the budget vote on June 30?
Can I ask a question at this point? Did we get any new potential board members to run? Do we know?
Yeah, I I'm sorry. I have a hard time with the lady's name because it's two last names, so I can't remember. But it's Elizabeth somebody and she used to be a children's librarian here.
She's planning to run. It's one person. We need another person to run.
Deb's running.
Who?
Who's running?
Deb's running, but.
Well, I know that, but we need another one, right?
We have three vacancies.
But Sandy's Sandy, you're up, right?
Yes, I am.
And Mike, Sandy and Mike are both up.
Mike are up, so we need one more person to run. So if anybody knows anybody who's interested, let's let's go around. I've we've tried. We haven't, but doesn't mean we can't stop asking.
Yeah. Or even if there's not time.
People.
That you can appoint somebody.
Yeah, we can appoint somebody.
That's probably your best idea right there because you don't want people going around getting signatures.
They literally can't.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
Okay, so anybody knows anybody who wants, we'll all ask around. Right now it's hard to ask around, but we can do it. Do we come up with? Okay, let's see. What's the next one? Reopening.
Wait, can I go back to the budget for one second, Peter?
Go ahead.
With those, and I have lost track. The, you know, I think we didn't the budget we last passed have those incremental raises for everybody?
No, it's this coming budget.
Okay.
Oh, the one that you approved to be voted on. So it would be.
When did that first, we was in phases, wasn't it?
Yes, it would be half the raise July 1st and then the other half January 1st.
But the problem is even if your budget passes, you may not have as much money in your budget as you think you do. And those raises may not be possible.
That's what I'm worried about.
Why?
Well, I don't know what what you've got in there that isn't all just your tax base. Do you have other like state? What other money do you have in there?
Oh, right. The state money is usually about $4,000. That's it. That's about it, really.
But your taxes?
Taxes pretty much run the place, so.
So my concern is another round of cuts from the government.
Right.
And I don't really think, I mean, I would be I would just warn everybody that this is the plan, but this could also be the plan because it's a real possibility that that money is going to be severely taken away. Not just from libraries, but school districts, county governments.
The state money, yes.
Yeah, and revenue money, you know, people aren't going to be able to pay their taxes.
I know, so but we would still get the same, the school has to collect and.
Yeah, but you can't collect if no one's paying.
I wonder how that.
But there'll be plenty of people to pay. I think that we have, we can't really go back on the budget we've established. We can deal with problems once we even find out where we stand.
Right.
And when we open. So I think that we have to move forward. We approve this budget.
Yeah, I'm gonna, in the next weeks, I'm going to look at the money we have, you know, our budget now, our current budget and any new expenses that are coming up and and make a adjustment to show you guys, you know, just we'll know more by, for sure by May. When are we meeting? The 21st? So we'll definitely know how we would do a vote.
Well, you'll have a better idea. You won't definitely know anything.
Right, we'll know something, but no, we won't know much.
The other thing is we almost always have an excess at the end of a year.
Well, that's what I wanted to say.
Being open, we'll it will have some more than we would normally have had because
Yeah.
while we're doing things, we're not spending that same amount of money.
Right, absolutely. And that's important that we don't dig into it too much because we are going forward with the HVAC project. We're supposed to, so. But I don't think I think we're in good shape. I really do.
I think you just need to put out there to the staff especially.
Oh, my, they don't. I don't tell them about raises till till they got them.
Right, but going forward, I mean, you, this, this might work for this year, but
I know.
recovery of the economy is going to take more than six months.
Um, I.
We got to be projecting.
Some of them about it. So and I'm going to put in my update that we're just, it's we're on a wait and see right now.
I just want everyone to be prepared and not freak out if things don't.
I don't think they're going to freak out. I think they know.
I I think that's a good idea, Sandy. Let people know that this, it could be a risk.
Yeah, they know. They know, so.
Well, especially they might only get half of their raise.
Right. Or no raise, you know.
Well, I would say they've done above and beyond. And if we're talking only a change of $4,000, I don't think it's fair to say that they wouldn't get any.
No, it would be quite a bit of a change if we didn't have the vote. That's what I was talking about.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that's the, no, the $4,000 is all right. That's fine. I hope we don't get it because that's like but you know, it does affect tiny libraries' budgets a lot more than it does ours, so I don't.
Well, time will tell, but I just think you need to know we're still a little bit of a moving target as far as funding. And.
They do know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on the budget vote? Okay. Reopening.
So that I already talked about. We will have in, you know, we will have direction from the powers that be on how to do that.
I got a question. The school when the school says they're reopening, what does that mean? Are they opening classes?
Right, we have to find out how, what I, what it all means. We don't know.
We don't know. So it could just be opening, opening so staff can go in and people can go visit. Because if they're going to open in June, let's say, June 30th, I mean, you're going to have summer classes or does it mean? I was just curious of what the opening of the library.
I have no idea.
We don't know yet. Okay.
They they won't be open after their regular closing date.
Right, they they would have summer school if they could.
I guess the question is, what does it mean when the school opens?
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
At that time of year, that's a good question to ask.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would take a wild guess that they're not going to have school the rest of the year. I don't know. I hope they do go back. But I have a feeling that regular school year is not going to go back. Maybe.
In September, I think.
September. I think right now I know Dundee is still planning to have summer school. So they're thinking that by that point, it may be okay and it's a smaller number of kids and all that. But even that is kind of up in the air right now, but they're sort of planning, I mean, Dundee is not telling us that they were not going to go back. They're going, you know, within two weeks, we'll see what. But my my gut and just kind of reading between the lines is we are not going back in June. But they are trying to plan for summer as though summer school will happen. So I don't know, you know, what that does as far as libraries and schools being open and whatnot. But I think when they say schools open, that it would be open to students.
Yeah, right. Right. That's what I think. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we would open before then.
Before schools?
Well, if the schools didn't open till September, I hope we can open. I think we'll be able to open the coming weeks. It, you know.
Well, I mean, that's all out of your your hands, guys, because that's all in the hands of the powers that be.
Right, and whatever they say we can do.
Is what we're stuck doing.
Right, so you know, if it means only one staff person up front and roll, you know, curbside service with an appointment, then that's what we'll do. You know, whatever it means, then we'll do it happily.
You know what Long's Books does? They're open and they just have a table out by the door.
Yeah, a lot of stores, I noticed that. We might do something like that.
No, anyway. Okay, the next item.
Can I just say on on, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk. Am I allowed to talk during?
Yeah.
I just read a really great article from a librarian sort of opposing the notion of library curbside. And I know like things could change and, you know, science could tell us that it's safe down the road, but as far as what we know right now. And I had, I'd been kind of thinking about this and like, well, what is the difference between what we do and what, you know, restaurants who are still allowed to deliver and have pickup? And the big thing is when you order something from a restaurant or a supermarket or Long's, you're taking something away and you're not ever bringing it back.
Yeah.
You take it.
We're different that way.
That's kind of the key thing that makes it like twice as. For libraries.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's why.
The library more vulnerable, absolutely.
And they talked about quarantining our stuff, you know, before it's loanable again. There's like all these different methods that we'll be using, I'm sure.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, which isn't on the agenda that you have printed out, but it's the one you sent us, is the quarantine closing.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I don't, I might have two different computers going and I don't know where the files are.
So has everybody read the quarantine closing? We're not, we're not going to approve it or anything. It's just new business. And what it says is, is okay if I read it?
Yeah.
The full time, permanent, part time or part time Penn Yan Public Library's employees are required to remain absent because of the quarantine imposed by a government governing authority. They will be granted leave with pay the period of required absence, absence. Such pay shall cover the employee's routine hours. Permanent part time and part time hours will be based on an average of the most recent three typical pay periods. The eligible for compensation during quarantine leave, full time and regular part time employees must be ready, willing and able to work remotely on projects identified by the executive director. When performing tasks remotely, employees must log time work. And this is from the Penn Yan Public Library bylaws.
No, that that's separate. It's a note that I put in there.
Separate, okay. We don't, we have to vote on this inquiry? I don't think so.
You can do it in in May.
Okay, and then another statement underneath. It says, from our bylaws, any proposals by committees that require full board action be sent to all board members in writing in advance of the next meeting. We do want to update bylaws by the one month between introducing and improving policies.
That's my note, like, do we want to put that down the line?
Everybody has gotten Angela's agenda and at the bottom is the quarantine closing. So I guess at the next meeting, we're going to vote on that, right?
Yeah, I just like, we always did this thing where policies, you know, you waited a month. And I can't find where the rule is.
Angela, I don't think it is because I looked at the bylaws after I sent you that email.
Like, where else would it be? I'm like, where are we coming up with this? So it's a great rule, so let's update those bylaws.
Is there any other discussion tonight? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, this is Marty. I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second. Diane?
Diane, all in favor? Peter, yes?
Aye.
Valerie, yes?
Aye.
Aye, everybody, aye?
Aye.
Everyone's aye.
Okay, and before we go, I would just like to thank everybody for being online tonight. It's an interesting, challenging time. And I hope everybody's well and we'll look forward to talking to you soon.
Okay, maybe we'll actually have a meeting in May, would hope spring eternal.
Sandy, I gotta tell you something. Sandy, we were thinking, since we had so much money to make those packs, that you would probably get a pile of them.
I'm sorry, to make what, honey?
Those kits for, to take home, that STLS is giving us a generous thousand.
Beautiful.
Yeah, we'll give you a pile too, I said, I said, you know, like, how could you, you couldn't, I don't know. We think there's 20 families in Yates County, but we're not sure, so. Even so, I mean, if there was 20. What's a thousand divided by 20, I mean, they would be like, really incredible, so. We can make more than 20, that's what I'm saying.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Really cool, yeah. Oh, and then one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I asked Rich Stewart and he dropped off a bunch of old political yard signs, and I'm making. Affirmative. You know, cheer up signs and putting them on there, and then they'll be in the front of the library. But I'm putting. I'm putting contact paper out of, and it takes so long to peel that. Paper, I'm like, what am I doing, but I'm really happy to do it, so.
Good, we can all use it.
Feels good.
Well, thanks, everybody, thank you for your work, Angela, thanks for everybody else's work.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Hello, Stacy. You guys too.
Angela, are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, um, did we hear from Mike or Kristen as far as their attendance?
I'm surprised Kristen forgot, she was here signing checks today.
Oh, so unexcused for both of us.
Mike's unexcused, yeah, I don't know why she forgot.
Yeah.
Most of the stuff anyways, so.
Okay, I just wanted to, I didn't wanna put him in the wrong spot. All right, I'll send these to you and if there's something that doesn't look right, let me know.
Yeah.
And Peter, while you're still here. Did I ever send you Angela's evaluation, director evaluation information?
I think you did.
Email it to you, but I can't remember if I did.
I think you did, I think I sent it back.
Okay, hopefully, I, like, all the compiled stuff?
I think so, you mailed it to me in regular mail, I thought. I'll double check, I know, I know I answered it.
Okay.
Well, I'll double check.
Okay, thanks, that was it.
Thank you, okay.
Thanks, Deb.
Yep, bye.
Thanks for all you do.
No, bye.
Have a great night, everyone.
Aye.
Bye.
Bye.
Angela, when you end the meeting, it's gonna automatically start, I don't know if you've done this before, to make the, the recording is gonna like render, so just let it run through and then.
Okay.
If you shut down the computer or anything, it takes a couple of minutes.
Leave meeting, no, I wanna end meeting.
I think that'll do it, yeah.
Okay.
All right, let me know if you have any questions or anything about it later.
Bye.
Bye.